Sarah Mueller, $1,000 Melvin Memorial Restoration Gift Account and Sunday Entertainment Licenses, 61 Walden, Inc., December 16th, 2:00 PM to 3:30 PM, 61 Walden Street Theater. And we are now moving to a discussion of...
I move to approve the... I send the agenda to Brad.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Move to the discussion of the Affordable Housing Funding Committee preliminary report. First, I want to thank the committee. Their presentation was excellent and a lot of work has gone into the report. I'm sure that there's areas of agreement and there's areas that there may not be full agreement. So I will open it up for the board discussion. I don't know, Mike, do you want to begin? I know you've prepared something.
Well, I just, not so much preparing as trying to get my thoughts. Quickly go through what I have here. But the first issue that struck me through all of this is that I wonder if we have a well-defined and understood affordable housing goal for the town. And what I did is I looked at the Housing Production Plan and what they had to say, Concorde Housing Corporation Goals and what they had to say, the Concorde Housing Foundation and what they were doing, and then looked at the Vision Concorde, which identified six particular goals in respect to housing standards. There on the one hand, quite a few statements about what we ought to be doing. And I'm a little concerned that if we can't grasp that to the ground in a little bit more definitive kind of way, it's going to be very difficult for us to understand the magnitude of the challenge we face and the costs associated with it. But just, I went on to say to myself, and I guess everybody here though, nevertheless, even if we don't have a very well-defined singular kind of goal, it's quite clear that even if we stay just with 10% going on, that as the committee report sort of represented, just to do that is probably mid to four to five million dollar range, although they, most of their estimates of cost were associated with multi-unit dwellings as opposed to buy-downs and the like. So I think one thing that I would hope to do is, and we can move different tracks here, is we work to sort of coalesce around what is our real goal here. I know we've heard from Terry, I don't know if Terry, I know we've heard from Terry a number of times about the notion of putting affordable housing within the town as opposed to larger developments and the like. So I think that's something we really need to try to do. And I was impressed when Charles had proposed this idea a couple of years ago. An implicit in what he was talking about was whose burden is this? Whose burden is it to meet whatever goal we have for the town? Charles' proposal, I don't think he ever exactly stated it, but Charles' rule was essentially, "Well, guys who build new houses in town are the ones requiring us to add 10% to that, so let's figure out a way to charge them and meet our needs that way." And again, you never said that, but I recall.
It was implied.
Well, if you read the long-range plan and you read these other housing authority goals, this is the town goal. So the consequence of that to me is that the town ought to, that citizens ought to be very important for that. So the funding that was proposed in the Affordable Housing Committee was essentially a balance in some, I don't know exactly how they came to their numbers, but a balance in having taxpayer-funded stuff and then developers and a transaction fee. So even though I don't know exactly what that balance should be like, I do like the balance of having the citizens involved in it because it's a town goal and the folks who are building these new houses as part of it. And three of the full funding sources proposed by the committee, it seems to me, fell within that arena. The one that didn't, in my way of thinking, is the proposal for pilot funding. And frankly, we haven't discussed it, but frankly, I would like us to sort of get rid of it for two reasons. One, we've tried this pilot thing in the future, or in the past, not related to affordable housing so much, but we've never made a lot of progress on it. And number two, if we really try to go with it, and that's just another whole big policy thing that we would have to wrestle to the ground, and I think time is short, but we need to get on with this. I went back, it's not really important, but I went back and threw the pilot out and sort of reallocated it amongst the existing three ones to come up with what would be involved in that. The funding sources that they came up with, the committee report sort of said funding sources should be stable and steady. I suppose that's true, but I don't think that's sufficient, just to be stable and steady. I think it has to have some connection to what I spoke about before. They did reject a number of them. One of the ones that they rejected was a local option on yields. And currently, the law is we can adopt a .75% tax on yields as a local option. The state is going to be considering changing that from .75 to 1.5. And the last four years that we did this at .75, it was like $380,000 is how much the town got. So I mean, if it turned out that it went to 1.5% and we didn't lose a lot of customers, that's still relatively small, but becomes something to sneeze at. So I think we should, you know, not necessarily throw that particular one out. One more comment, and that was in addition to figuring out funding and trying to grasp the goals to ground, we also are going to have to figure out how the funds will be managed. And I think this is also something of real importance, whether we, how we do it, the money, if we figured it out, comes in for something, but we're going to have to figure out how the funds are going to be managed. So, you know, the committee report was a really good first start, and they did a lot of good job, and there's a lot of detail in pages five through 10 that aren't played in their summary. But I think coming up with a goal is something we've got to try to tighten up. It can't be, you know, six goals of the Housing Corporation, seven goals of the Concorde, Envision Concorde, and you know, that's not going to work. But I think the three primary funding sources, a budget line item, a building permit fee, and a local real estate transfer fee, I mean, those are good, stable sources of income that spreads the burden in the town. I think we received a letter from Mr. Carr, sort of supporting some of these options.
What was your thought regarding the increase of the CPA funding from one and a half to something higher than that?
I don't, I'm not really an expert. I don't know why we wouldn't go ahead and do it. We're not going to probably get much for it, though, especially because a lot of big towns like Boston, Framingham are now coming in. And the governor has said he's going to try to provide additional funds, but you know, I don't know how that's going to go. And the calculation between the one and a half that you get and the three is different. So whatever we got at one and a half, we're not going to just double what we get. It's a decline. Somebody who's worried about CPA stuff can tell us. I don't know why we don't do it, but I wouldn't suggest that we necessarily do it for this. We always have seemed to have lots of CPA projects coming in relatively limited funds.
I know that a year and a half ago, the committee was looking at potentially asking the town to increase to 3% and reached out to a couple committees, including the Finance Committee, that was not in support of that at the time.
So one of our jobs is to be mindful of the overall tax rate to our citizens. And as we look at a number of these, they all have, many of them have tax implications. So we need to look synergistically at what are the other areas where the costs are going up and see if we can contain costs as something manageable for people. So it's...
But if we're talking about an annual budget line item, that's going to affect the taxes just as much. And the CPA at least may only be 5%, but that's 5% more than the line item's budget.
So I think clearly from Ari and Mike's assessment of all this is that it's not one of these is a solution, but it's a combination. And I would suggest that we look into the zoning changes that would help make it easier to develop multi-unit housing in areas that are currently only single-family houses? Or whatever the zoning looks like, a building on top of the commercial building, five, you know, items on accessory, you know, a thorough street or, you know, look at the zoning areas.
Both the law, Envision Concorde and the Affordable Housing Committee called those things, called those things out. In the Envision Concorde, they talked about discouraging the demolition of smaller homes and the replacement of large, expensive homes, encouraging renovation of existing single-family homes in all zoning districts, and identifying opportunities to create access accessory dwellings, units within existing structures. Essentially, much of that was reared in the Affordable Housing Committee. So, you know, I think that's sort of us in a positive way, making our views known and talking to the planning board.
That's one that I would, you know, right off the bat, like, you would take pilot off? I would agree on taking pilot off. Do we have a agreement to put on the zoning changes as one of our recommendations?
The zoning changes seem to me to be sort of like an efficiency net. Let's work with what we've got to make it more accessible for affordable housing to start, you know, that's the zoning changes. And then in parallel, we'll get funding mechanisms for more.
And I think also part of the zoning changes is encouraging a timeline that has the same priority that some of the other interests in the zoning changes has. So, you know, so that's not always, we're going to look at these zoning changes in these three categories first, and then affordable housing, and again, is on the bottom of the list. So we need to encourage that, I think.
I think our job there is if this is something we support, then we should write our behalf to the planning board to encourage them to please do this consistent with the long-range plan, independent of what the Affordable Housing Report said. I support all that, but the long-range plan is very clear and specific issues that the planning board should take up.
You know, additional thing that I think is important to the discussion is where we see the, whatever strategies are applied, where we see that going in terms of the level of affordable housing. So in other words, 85% or less of an area mean income, when there's a real need also in addition for the 85%, certainly up to 110%, but some people would say up to 150%. Because we've heard from our citizens and in the long-range plan that we also need to address workforce housing, new, younger potential citizens to have homes in Concord, as well as people who are looking for downsizing that wouldn't necessarily be assisted living. So that takes us above the 85% AMI in that category, that's somewhere in a moving target, 110%, or some would say a little higher than that, for the Concord Affordable, up to 150. You know, they're different. So I think that's another important part of this discussion, which I know is harder for us to tackle, but, you know, our planning department and regional housing services certainly think about that continuum.
So I think this, the document, I remember, I think it was a recommendation, maybe it was a statement of fact, you guys can tell me, that 75% of the funds would be used for...
They did have a recommendation.
So that's...
Probably 85%.
85% of the median, mean...
And then 85%.
Yeah, they did have a specific recommendation.
That's how it seems to me is we're getting ahead. That's once we've raised the money.
Right.
And this focus is on...
How do we raise it?
How do we raise the money?
Much more understand it.
Right. Spend it first.
To me, raising the money for...
For, yeah, that's why I've raised it now.
I think it's part of the coming to some idea of what the, if we're successful, what does it look like?
So you're questioning whether the statements in the document are ones that we would aspire to, nine to 10 affordable units per year, and three to four million dollars a year expenditures. That's what you're asking, is that our baseline, or that's the fact that's presented in this report?
No, they, from my point of view, they sort of just, they did some baseline calculation. The baseline calculations is X number of new homes per year. If you want to stay at 10%, that means you better do affordable housing, and you better do 80 to 90 over a 10-year period, or year, over a 10-year period. And then they, so that's the baseline for them. The second baseline was, well, what does it cost to do this? They looked at more or less multiple unit dwellings, came up with four to $500,000 per unit, so times what you've got, that gives you a baseline. Is 10% the only goal we have? Do we aspire to do more than that? What does it look like? Is it really true if you're doing, again, taking, like, Bert Terry talk about, and you number of times really we wonder what houses around town, is that still a good number, four to $500,000? I don't know.
And I think this calculation tells to include the housing that may already be being developed by developers who are proposing multi-unit development where some units are affordable.
That was one of the questions I had, and it's saying that nine to, 900 to 1,000 new homes every 10 years, some of those new homes, they are affordable, so that may ...
Bring that number down.
And I'm not sure whether nine or 10, we don't have to do it every year, some years are going to be better opportunities than others. So I think what you want is to have a sustainable amount of funds that you can kind of count on. You may not spend it each and every year, and you're going to build it up, and there may be an opportunity then you could do multiple units. So I think that Liz presented when we were talking about Blackburks, the possibility of a million dollars, the various options for where the funds could be kept. I found that very useful. And I think we can, you know, go back, even after we invented that wheel, we can go back and review that and make it a termination, but...
And apropos, your discussion and some of our discussion about the funding mechanisms, we've also talked about the importance of flexibility of that funding, and that some of these strategies are already putting us out one, two years minimally. And so we may want to look at something we can do in the short run, maybe at a lower level of funding, albeit, but that while we're working on putting in place the strategies that we know are going to take us a couple of years to accomplish.
Well, that's the point, my remarks in some sense was to say, I don't really know what our goal is, and I don't know exactly what the cost is going to be, but I, but this seems like a reasonable number and a reasonable amount. So let's get started. And then as we get our stuff together here and get our goals tightened up a little bit, we learn a little bit more about costs, you know, we can come back and we can say, well, we have to do more here, we don't need to do as much here. But we need to get started on this stuff, is my...
This is just a semantics point. You know, when we talk about the three likely categories, the budget line item, I think we need to be careful and say a local transfer tax, an additional local transfer surcharge. It's pairing the word local and surcharge when we're talking about that as a strategy is important, because there is already a transfer tax that is required for the state.
Affordable housing transfer tax, if we decide to do that, and give it a title so we know that those monies are set aside? That's an approach that I like. I'm not sure how we funded it, 1% or half a percent or what that percentage, but it puts the burden on the developer, pretty much, to come up with affordable units in some way, shape, or form. My only question is if somebody purchases a piece of property with the intent of building a multi-unit thing, and has already included affordable housing on site?
What do we do then?
What do you do then?
That's that developer.
Double the angle.
Yeah, exactly, double the angle.
So that was, that's the only question I came up with when I was reading, this is what happens, is a lot of our properties are being bought up by developers who are selling multiple units?
So the transfer tax is a real estate transfer tax and applies to everyone, and, you know, single units that are being built and so forth. So the addition of a local transfer tax surcharge, which I think they, when I pushed the committee, they said would, the burden would be on the buyer for that as opposed to the sellers. Again, trying to make it less objectionable to the real estate community.
Also, you're really talking about the building permit fee.
Okay.
Part of that, which was Charles's sort of original proposal a couple of years ago.
You know, I think quite follow the logic, maybe the facts in here about the amount of new, whether permit fees generated, a lot of those permit fees went to institutional developments, which are outside, I think, unless you calculated only the residential permit fees, then I would assume any permits for the museum or, unless we exempted Academy from their new buildings, I don't know. But I just, we just should know what we're talking about in terms of those permit fees or those really only on residential property permits?
There's a great deal of work that's going to, I suppose we just whack those three items, forget. There's a lot of work that's going to have to be done in order to get those into accordance with laws and rules. And this is not, you know, a simple, a simple kind of problem. Even the committee report, you know, is when they talked about the options in more detail, you know, they talked about sliding scales and a host of literatures of...
Well, the building permit fee surcharge and the local real estate transfer fee surcharge both have to have the state house approval.
Would we need special authorization for both of those? For the realty tax or the real estate transfer?
The realty tax, the change in realty tax from .75 to 1.25 will or will not be a bill in the legislature. If it's passed, then we have the option of energy the way we see fit. I don't think we could propose a town change from .75 to 1.25.
That would be the state.
That would be the state.
The other comment I would make is the notion, and I appreciate that donations are not, can't count on them, but I would like to make sure that that's kind of still a focus, that we try to allow, whether it's corporate or individual. And this town has a number of people, the library, the museum, Emerson Umbrella have had significant private contributions. And one would hope that those type of contributions might be available also for affordable housing.
Affordable Housing Foundation, in fact, goes out.
Yeah. And whether there's some matching, you know, type with certain, I mean, at some point, it may come down that there are not going to be sufficient funds to complete a project, but we're close enough that if private funds were available, we might be able to complete it.
I think the question that anybody can explain to me better than my knowledge is on how we might apply a affordable housing bond. If we were to split a bond for some amount of money, how does that, and we currently don't have a project in mind, how does that work?
Split a bond in search of a...
You're trying to get a treasury.
Oh. Oh, come on into the meeting. You can't be in the hallway.
That may be why she wasn't.
I was just helping my...
I'm sorry, that's not possible.
Good evening.
Good evening. So...
We still will have to do the...
Introduction.
Identify.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Carrie LaFleur, I'm the Finance Director. So the question is what, how would that work?
So how do you use the idea of floating municipal bonds for limited to affordable housing development? If we currently don't have a project in mind, but I'm looking to seek fund the possibility of development, should one come up?
So just, just so you have access to funds?
How does that work? We pay on that bond, so what, how does that work?
Well, that's an interesting question.
Bond attorney's lawyer specificity.
Right, and so I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, is there a way to seek town meeting approval for a, for a general concept without having a specific project? I think we'd have to look into that further with our, with bond counsel, but I think there probably would be some way to have a town meeting authorization to give us the ability to access funds when a project became available.
So could there be a way for us to get town meeting approval to issue an affordable housing bond on a general basis, if the town would in advance up to a certain amount, allow the town to, if a project came up and we had no money to execute a deal on, but we had prior authorization to exercise on a bond sale, affordable housing bond sale? Could there, is there a way to do that? Somebody just go ahead and do it, and a good deal comes up?
That's a little trickier, but it's not, we can access short-term funds fairly quickly, you know, within a two to four week period, we could easily do a temporary financing.
So that's a borrowing from somewhere.
Right, we'd have to have the town meeting authorization. We wouldn't permanently finance, we wouldn't issue a bond until we knew exactly what it was for and the dollar amount. But we would have, we would have the authority, and then we would use short-term borrowing in order to have funds available quickly.
So that's the way you could, that's how you solve it. Get town meetings, give you an authorization, you borrow up to $5 million to support Concorde's affordable housing goals, and then if something comes up, we issue a bond.
Is that right?
Yeah. With two to four weeks.
Without having to go back to town meeting.
But that...
And are you aware whether that's been done in other communities?
That I don't know.
That's it. So that's something we have...
That's what we're looking into, yes. That might be the, sort of made a quick and easy way for...
At least one option to get to jumpstart it. You know, we don't currently have a project in the works.
Right. And a couple of these are going to take a couple of years, so if you want to do something right away...
Then couldn't we, at a subsequent date, supposing we did what Al suggested, we issued, we got town meeting good for the $5 million authorization, a borrowing authorization for 40 million. And then subsequently, we move forward with these transfer taxes. Couldn't we specify the transfer tax revenue would repay a bond?
I'm assuming you could do that. However, the interest rates on that type of bond would be higher, and I don't know that there would be a need to do that internally, town-wide, we could have a policy, we could have, you know, our... have a policy, we could have, you know, our, I just think we would be looking to issue.
Why would you prefer to rely on?
Because the general, a revenue bond would have a higher interest rate than a general obligation bond. It might be insignificant, but.
But it might not.
But it might, it might.
That's how much we want, right?
I'm, I can't, I'm not, I'm not going there.
I like that in the sense that we start to go to the town, so that's important. But that would allow us to get started and then we could unbundle these much more complicated transfer kind of activities or line items or whatever. However, we decide to go forward over time as we watch through the details of.
If you go to the town, you're going to the town without a definite interest rate that you're paying because you don't know what that's going to be at the time that you have to access.
Right, we.
You don't know that, I need you.
Yeah.
We can look prevailing rates, we can, you know, we can see what recent of the town authorizes a long ago to school.
I would guess the more expected objection from citizens would be that we didn't have nailed down the future revenue stream to pay off that bond. That would be my guess. So I do know, and Carrie will have the details on this, that CPA funds have the ability to bond, float a bond. But then it's, the obligation for paying that is against the already decreasing amount of funds that come in every year. And they're hesitant to do that because they never know what projects are going to be coming in front of them and so forth, so that.
No, we're never missing projects.
Right, right, right. So that, other towns have done that for affordable housing projects in particular. But that was several years ago when there was much higher rate of matching funds coming in and so forth, so.
I'd like us to look at our free cash policy. I was intrigued by Brookline's approach to validate funding of affordable housing of free cash. So we don't, we have a policy that states how much free cash, one percent of free cash we like to carry over each year.
Or a guideline.
A guideline. So if Brookline says anything in excess of that in a given year, is some portion of it, it is turned over to the affordable housing trust that they put in hand. And I think that that's worthy of our discussion to think about because the times we've had way more than four percent.
The, the policy is five to 10 percent. And when it gets over 10 percent, the policy states what we should be expending it on. And it's really, it's capital projects, so this type of project would certainly fit that definition, but it can go to, it could be recommended to be expended on any capital project.
So we currently have the authority in our, in our free cash policy to do just what I said. We could, we could decide to take a million dollars and set that aside into the affordable housing trust fund or whatever it is that we set up. We have nothing that impedes us from doing that now.
That's correct.
But we don't, do we also have a policy, I know from the practice recently, that a million dollars of free cash goes to reduce property taxes?
Yes, and that is in the finance committee's recommendation so far for fiscal '20 as well.
And I know, I know in previous tons when I've looked at this, would it be fair or reasonable to conclude that as we look to the future, our ability to add a million dollars to free cash every year might be more difficult?
I, I think so, only because I think we're taking a little bit of a different approach on how we're forecasting revenues.
Well, that's what I meant, the forecasts are a little tighter, both on cost and revenues, so that you're not getting that big bump.
Right.
And we're already within the five to 10 percent.
We are, we're, I want to say we're probably around nine percent now. We haven't had our free cash certified, but it's, it's certainly, I don't expect it to be above 10 percent.
My point is that there's going to be a drag on, there's likely to be a drag on the free cash balance going forward if the finance committee recommendation continues to allocate a million dollars to reduce property taxes essentially.
Sure, and it may be that in a year or two, the finance committee won't even recommend that because it would bring the free cash balance to, not, not below the 5 percent threshold, but much closer to that than the town has ever been in, or in a long time.
So our free cash position is tightening over time?
It is, it is tightening, yes.
Yeah, they're on purpose. It's not an accident. Purpose of your time, which I think is why this fiscal policy is going to get tightened up over time.
I really have at least an easy solution.
Well, I have one more question.
Yes.
So if there's a big town guidance that says excess free cash, a million dollars should go back to repay property tax. If the, I want to make sure that the options that we're including in funding affordable housing are not increases in property taxes that we repay by free cash. So I don't want to be causing property taxes to rise and expect free cash to help to ameliorate the rise in property tax. So if you could get the balance right here between all the financial options. In fact, I'm not a finance expert. Do you think so?
You know, I, I understand the concept of what you're saying, but when you think about all the things that we bring before town meeting to vote on that are additional expenditures that are adding to the tax base deliberately, the town deliberates and decides, yes, this is important enough that they want to do that. So we're already doing that.
For things like the schools and.
Well, and other projects that.
But I mean, that's going to be the trade-off to some extent. You can't have, the money's not coming from nowhere. It either has to come out of the school budget, it has to come out of the police budget, the fire budget, you know, we have, I mean, I've gone to the finance committee meetings and I think we're doing a good job in terms of trying to keep funds down and negotiating with the unions. But you're competing against private industry a lot of times for skilled labor. And so you're getting a 3 percent, two and a half percent increase in that, which is built in. And I think the finance committee is trying to keep the taxes down below kind of a four to 5 percent. You've got a one and a half already CPA, so if you raise that another one and a half, that's on top of the taxes. If you've got a.
Meal tax.
Annual budget line item. Well, hopefully the meal tax to some extent, that's at least a more voluntary and then maybe more tourists and outside people coming.
And that's a question to, after we charge our tourists more to eat in one of our fine restaurants than elsewhere.
I'm always happy to do that.
Why don't we encourage tourists in here?
I agree, but, you know, I'm actually one of two percent. I think that's a more elastic. But I don't know the taxes. I, I'm kind of worried that by, you know, trying to create a very good goal of affordable housing, we increase the tax rate year after year, it makes staying in one's home unaffordable. And that's the trade-off. It's a trick, you know, it's not an easy situation. And we want to pay our employees a reasonable amount. We've got excellent employees and we want to keep them. But there's only, you know, that gets paid through taxes. And, you know, I just think in this year, we can come up with the Dorel Land Purchase, which I'm, you know, very much in favor, I think is terrific. It's going to cost us White Pond, there are, with the Engelbrook property that we bought a few years ago, you know, there's all sorts of competing interests that I think it's a difficult not to do. And that's why I think the report is excellent in not going after just one source, going after a number of different ones. And I do agree with Mike and Linda that I think the pilot program doesn't make any sense. And it'd be nice, and I was a little surprised, I'd love to see Harvard have to give the town a million dollars a year, but I don't think that's going to happen.
Well, what we're trying to do is create a wedge, you know, different wedges in the, in the pie of funds that we can come up with. And then the question is, how do we get the jumpstart? Which one, which piece can we move first?
Going back to Alice's query, just a brief conversation with Tom before the, before our meeting started, you know, suppose we went, suppose we went and have a guideline of 900,000. And so Chris couldn't go to the, go to the finance committee with forgetting any other increase, a $900,000 fund in, in his budget. And, you know, the finance committee could say, fine. The finance committee could say, well, we're only going to increase your budget by $700,000 if you figure out how to do the rest of it. And then down the road, a few years, they remember that it's, that thing is a fixed item, and so it gets to be, gets to be very complicated. If it wasn't, if it wasn't, you know, put on the budget, that particular free cash would be the way you dealt with it. And that's going to shrink, so I think we need to be, we need to be very careful.
And we're going to end up, I mean, it would fairly soon have to have a new middle school in the town that is going to be a costly. So there are many competing interests, I'm afraid.
Absolutely, but that, to me, while I appreciate that, that's why you're going to town meeting.
Right, yeah.
You know, town meetings are usually, we think we should do, and the town says, gee, I don't think we need one of those, or they do.
Yeah.
So to me, I think putting a proposal together that says affordable housing, everybody says is important, here's how we intend to fund that, what do you think?
I agree.
I mean, I think that, and if the town doesn't want to do it, then.
Yeah.
Same with the middle school.
Yeah.
That's the great beauty of town meetings.
No, and I think they all should be separate items so that everybody's kind of aware and it's not a package, it's four or five different items.
I want to go back and, because I think trying to get this done, you know, we were really concerned that we had something, because a town meeting's been two years now since Charles made that proposal, we've been working hard in Todd's committees.
Thanks, Richard.
You're something like. He is working, is working very hard. But the reality to me is, this is a tight little package that we can go to town meeting and is not likely. So that's why I think.
Get authorization.
But be able to articulate as much as we can how in the future we intend to repay this bond. You know, I just don't know whether the town would find it, forgetting how they felt about the idea, whether they would think our reason for how, or methodology for how we're going to repay the bond was sufficient to allow them to vote, you know, something like that, I think that's the path.
Maybe your finance director could help us with the language on what, how you can make that bond specific, that's advantageous to the town, you know, something that, some company that we do offer a bond that we can't afford, and what are the decisions we'd be making, even if a project were to come up, if the financing just wasn't going to be feasible because it's just too costly, you'd have to say, we wish we could, but we had the authority, we exercised the authority to research and found it was too expensive or unable to repay the debt.
You're not suggesting that we not go forward on the building permit fee surcharge and the local real estate transfer fee surcharge?
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that that's not the path forward. What I'm suggesting is to have that fee structure and that transfer structure delineated in a way that a wire wouldn't pass out in cold shock by the time we get to town meeting. I just wonder if we could do that.
So I wonder if we could go for special legislation, if that's what we.
That's my suggestion.
Right, so even without having this absolute figured out, how we'll repay or how we'll fund, whatever the issues are, they're in the same transfer, what happens to a developer who's already developing? So maybe the language of what, will get developed over the next year. At the same time, we've asked the legislature for special legislation to allow us to do this.
That would probably require a town meeting.
So we could do it, so I think that was your question. This town meeting, we could have an article that asks the, you know, town meeting for special legislation to allow us to do each of the.
Yeah. And I, like, there's going to be delay.
There'll be a year delay, please.
The delay is limited in percent.
The question would be though, how, I think that's, that's an idea, but the question would, for me, is how detailed would that warrant article have to be? Could you just say, well, then, go over to the people in the state, people would have to specify.
You have to have town council.
You know, Todd's, the committee reports, they had very different levels of transfer, very different levels of fees. Would we have to have that as part of the warrant? Or could we just say?
So we, let's see, town council.
Yeah. Occasionally, we write the specific legislation that's being proposed, write it down to the last word, and the town meeting adopts it, and the legislature likes to see that the town meeting has voted.
If we could get that level of specificity and detail done, then it could just be part of the warrant.
But with a transfer tax, it's very complicated. I suspect it will have to be rather broad. The, the fees are a little bit more simple, and that could be very specific.
But other, I mean, the legislature has passed each of those for other communities, so it's doable, other things may, that we should proceed.
Nina's going to have a long list from us.
So you're proposing, you'd like to see draft warrant articles for, either one for both or two or each one?
I think they have to be each, I don't think they do one view.
A warrant article that would be a bond authorization. And then there would be a second warrant article for the building permits, and a third warrant article for the transfers.
Yeah.
And that still leaves the question of what do we do about the third funding option, which was a line item in the town's budget?
I, I would prefer to see that be part of the CPA, just because it's, it's the same amount in essence of funds, and we're at least getting, whether it's 5 percent or we're getting some percent of the state match. So I don't see any reason to leave that sort of off the table for a budget item.
It would be an annual CPA proposal, if that's all you could do is propose. They've got their own authority and responsibility to choose articles, find out, it's all things you can find and see.
You, you can find the percentage of their funding, isn't that already what's done?
That's already, that's a restructure.
Yeah, and I think that can get changed.
No, but my point is, within the housing component of CPA, I don't think you can.
Give 100 percent.
No, I don't mean, I don't even mean that. I don't think you can tell the CPC, you have to do this.
You had to raise this.
I think you'd have to go to the, we've done multiple year projects. We did, we did the Junction Village one, and, you know, we, once we said it was going to be accepted, I forget the exact number, but we're going to do it over a three-year period. It could have been any time in years two and three, but I'm sorry, Todd, we're out of here.
So you can't, you can't find future.
Yeah, so the minimum state requirement for housing, community housing is 10 percent. And, but the committee. And, but the committee has the ability, within the funds that are available, to award more than ten percent annually. But if we wanted to say, we really want a minimum of twen-, I'll just pick a number here, we would like to see that a minimum of twenty percent funds, percent of the funds are allocated to housing each and every year. That would be a bylaw change, which would have to go to town meeting. So that's my understanding.
So to change the allocation on a permanent basis requires a bylaw amendment?
They have their own bylaws. And the state has specified, you know, ten percent for open space, ten percent for community housing, and preservation, historic preservation, the other ten percent. If, if, if the, if you wanted to increase any of those categories percentage, it's gonna involve the town meeting and by, and their bylaws. That's my understanding.
That's one clause. That is, we need to get the percentage up high enough so it would matter. The concern I have is, that's year one, maybe the percentage changed. But now the second year, we go back to them and say, we'd like half a million dollars for our affordable housing fund. They could say, sorry, we don't want.
Yeah, they already, they already.
Not if you, but if you mandated, they're required to give twenty percent, at least you've got your twenty percent.
They don't need to give it to the fund that we want.
Oh, I do know. To affordable house.
No, but that's an annual decision, is what you're saying. You can't buy a future.
Correct.
It's not an easy vehicle for, to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish.
No, it's not.
It's not.
But to me, I know, from CPA funds, which are tax funds, from free cash, which are tax funds, if you can get spent, or from the line item budget, that's an important component to funding the affordable housing goes into town. So I don't know exactly how we get this worked out, but to me, something in that arena has to be part of the board.
Well, aren't we offering all the tools that we have? We're saying, here are all the different ways we can do it. We're not necessarily describing how much you can come out beyond the first year.
No, but as I understood the proposal, that we go, just making up numbers, we go to the town and say, give us bond authorization for five million dollars to set up an affordable housing fund. I remember one. Here is how we intend to pay it back, right? And please give us the authority to go to the state legislature for fees and that stuff. Now, what about tax stuff? I think that has to be, that has to be part of the plan that we go to town meeting, that we're gonna ask them for bond authority. So we have to decide CPA, free cash, or line item, combination thereof.
It seems to be a line item, it's probably free cash is flexible, and I'm hearing that the issue of CPA is uncertain. So that's not, the greatest degree of certainty is gonna be a line item.
No, that's not even certain. And at town meeting, someone can say, I have thirty dollars for affordable housing, and I talk about that.
I think it's, I think the more straightforward one, which I'm not, I'm saying this for a sort of support, would be to say, you're gonna allocate free cash, either on the Brookline point of view, or five hundred thousand dollars every year is allocated to this bond, end of story. If the finance committee wants to recommend, because that's a decision that the finance committee couldn't say, oh, well, timeout, we don't take that. That would be something the town would recommend to do. They would still have the authority in recommending the guideline to suggest that we allocate additional free cash to mediate or mitigate property tax increases. So they could say, well, we're still doing a million, a million for property taxes, until it got down to that five percent thing. So I think that, if we're looking for clarity at town meeting, I think free cash allocation is clearer, more certain thing than CPA or a line item. Line item worked really well for the first year. And, I mean, I was a finance committee, so I got a laugh. And the next year is, Chris, it sounds like a personal problem to me. And, you know, the town is, could be put in as a line item, because the town does line item budgets, but still, Chris has asked, you know, meet a target. And it's his job to figure out how to reallocate funds with the various.
And now that you two are heading off to another committee, or another meeting fairly soon, how do you wanna?
We're supposed to.
Okay.
Of course, you get out of here by six twenty.
Okay, okay. I'm always uncomfortable with the term free cash, because cash is never free. And once you get down above the five percent, it seems to me you have the same issue that you have with the line item. And one of the things that I think clearly you don't wanna do is jeopardize the town.
Tripwire on for you.
Yeah. So I guess, and I'm, you know, you're much more financially adept than I am.
It's just arithmetic.
I look pretty good at that.
You know, you set up a free cash allocation, you either reduce your free cash balance or you don't. But this would at least make it a policy decision that the town meeting has set. That is, we're devoting this much of free cash every year to this amount.
This much over this ten percent, this much over seven percent, this much over eight percent, you know, what, if our free cash balance is somewhere between five and ten, do we, do we have to specify that that five hundred thousand is allocated at what percentage of the free cash that we have? So say we, is it only over ten percent? If our range is quite wide, from five to ten percent, we say anything over eight percent? I don't know. I don't think I remember what Brookline really.
I think it was eight.
There's was anything over eight percent?
I think so.
We could do that, yeah. We should, we could also just say, as long as our free cash balance is within the, within the guideline established by the finance committee, five and ten percent, X will be devoted every year.
Every year.
And if not, we'd have to have some, if not, not. But it would probably be, I don't, Carrie's not here anymore, but it's probably, she's still there, I don't know. I just know that because of the good financial work that she's done, this free cash.
She's missing that comment. Very good financial work. Good thing you're missing yours.
I was just commenting again, you heard, you said this before, that based on your quick financial practices, we're gonna see the annual contribution of free cash get small. And I don't know if at some point it goes away, it probably never will really go away, but, but it's not gonna be a million bucks in perpetuity.
Right, right. That, that's just not how we're putting estimates together anymore.
So can we arbitrarily set five hundred thousand? And we have to make that a, or some percentage, or some percentage of free cash above eight percent? I, I don't, so on good years, it could be a million, on bad years, it could be ten thousand.
I think that's a good arithmetic problem to go.
We can build a model, present it. Eric, you can just. But you can see what we're getting at, right?
We should, we should look at two or three probably ways to talk about it. Just a flat, simple one, five hundred a year, whatever the number is, five hundred a year if, so we could figure out. So we can, if we want Carrie and I'll see if we can put together a little spreadsheet-y kind of thing about what that might look like.
Anybody else?
No, I see a lot of people here. Can we get that?
Well, I'm gonna suggest that they email rather than, I'm sure we could go on well past the six twenty, if people wanna get to other committees.
Well, we definitely would have to wait, but wait a minute.
Well.
Can I, just, I'm gonna show him something. So our position is, we'd like to go forward at town meeting with a bond authorization. We didn't say how much, but.
No, we love it. I, X million.
Somewhere between four and five hundred, whatever. And then we'll also go to town meeting with specific policies about how we would gather funds to repay the bond offering. And that would be some free cash thing that everybody would want to do. Authorization from the town to go to the state for legislation that allows to do transfer tax and for free tax.
What I have.
Yeah. Anybody in agreement with that?
And that we will encourage the planning board and planning department to look into the zoning changes that might enhance our ability to build in the form of.
Let's just tie that directly to the, no, to, to the, I would like it tied to Envision Concord, identifying goals related to housing that got in there specifically, zoning-y kind of thing. So I'd like to see if we could.
I think they're already doing that.
Yes, they are.
I'm sure.
But I think echoing, asking. You just have something from us saying, this is a high priority for us, right?
Exactly. And could they identify what their priorities are in the timeline? I think, I'm looking for some.
Ways of the bond, what would happen? Those are the things I have on my notes as the first steps.
Wanna take ten minutes, or anybody wanna come and make comments?
Don't ask again.
Terry.
If somebody's gonna come, I will. Terry Rattamal, three thirty, Musketica Road. Longtime housing advocate. Over the years, I have grown to admire the finance committee and the work they do. There have been years when I read all of their minutes and the minutes of their subcommittees. It's a magnificent operation that we have there, and we should be proud of it. But their work and their role is not all that Concord is. The long-range plan that we just had published, like many before it, indicates a town with aspirations. If you squeeze every aspiration down to the pennies you don't wanna spend, then we wouldn't be what we are today. I, for one, would like to know quickly whether the bonding idea is legal. And certainly by the coordination meeting on the first, we should have an answer to that. You know, a few years ago, the state reminded us that we had a debt for retirement funds. And so we are still paying against that debt to make sure we have money that's there for that need. Affordable housing has long been a goal of Concord. It is an unfunded need. It's easy to say that affordable housing advocates go out and raise money like the museum does, like a library does. But think about that. You're raising money for affordable housing, think about it. I could count the number of those kind of donors on one hand. So I think it's like backing up our retirement funds, backing up a goal that we have had for several decades now. And housing needs commitment, not only from the town meeting votes we've had over the years, which have been largely successful, but from this town and this board, to this goal which will affect the shape of Concord in the future. So, sorry to bother you with those terms, but that's the perspective I have from following this for a long time. Thank you.
Charlie, before you get up, so you're not happy with what we're doing? I don't understand the point of your, I know you're.
No, you're, you're close. But I'm worried about the bond idea, because I have never heard that one before. I'm not sure that our study committee ever heard about that one.
It's in the committee report.
Is it? Okay. And it's legal?
We'll see.
We'll see.
That's a current question. It has been done.
But I think the commitment means, and all of us, as was remarked earlier, all of us in this town have something to support it. And that means through taxes, in one way or another. So that's not religion of the finance committee. They have a very important religion that they follow. But that's not all of this town. We're better than a one-dimensional thinker. And I think we have lots of things to show, show that in our purchases, our developments, and many of our interests in town. This one, affordable housing, is unfunded. Thank you. Any other?
Thank you very much. Mark Galis, sixty-two Prescott Road. So I, I support very much all the efforts of the committee and the discussion here. I had suggested at an early meeting of that committee that they seek a mix of funds to kind of share the burden and also make it more sustainable. So I completely support that. I'm concerned about the possible negative effects of zoning law changes to try to come up with more affordable housing. I think there can be a lot of negative effects, so it has to be looked at very carefully. It's not a simple thing at all. It can be kind of like trying to fill a leaky bucket. I'd sent a note to the planning board, and I copied the select word a little while ago on it, about, you know, for certain things like planned residential development, where you're giving a developer a lot of advantage, and in some cases, quite large development. There's a couple of them on the table right now at least. Demanding, you know, asking for ten percent only if they go over the basic density is only keeping you at par, assuming you have a ten percent goal for affordable housing, which I'm not sure is the right goal, given the fact that we're actually losing affordable housing. There's places where there's kind of a double whammy of an affordable house being torn down, and something not so affordable put in. So I would recommend that a lot of thought and discussion go into any, you know, zoning-based solutions, including looking at what other, other communities have done in terms of saying ten percent requirement in order for certain types of relief from standard zoning. It should be a much higher number. I mean, it should be twenty percent or something like that. Thank you very much. And by the way, can I, can I make one more comment? To that, the Envision Concord plan does not require or recommend increase in population, increase in development, et cetera. So this is kind of a very troubling thing to me a little bit, in the sense that, you know, you might have a short-term trend of a hundred houses a year or something, but certain things are being lost, certain things are being added. This all kind of factors into a very complicated system. And I think the kind of dynamics of it mean that we, we, we have to be very careful about taking certain trends for granted, or saying, you know, the, the way out of not having enough affordable houses is to build more non-affordable ones and kind of ride, piggyback a little bit of. is to build more non-affordable ones, and kind of ride, piggyback a little bit of something on the back of it. So, sorry.
So my question is, in, in terms of the zoning opportunities that Alice outlined, i.e. more mixed use in, in retail spaces, things to protect smaller homes, were your concerns based in, in those places, or are you really talking about the PRD and some of the other developing sweeteners?
I, I think though, I, again, I think it's very helpful to be very specific. I think that's the only way we can avoid unforeseen consequences, and get a lot of people to look at it. So I think, you know, the mixed use in, in town centers and, you know, upstairs apartments, I think, I think that's wonderful. I think it's great to try to preserve small houses with the cost of land in the town, and the tax burden associated with that. If somebody has a house that's worth much less than the land it's sitting on, they're paying taxes on the land. I don't know how to solve this, but I support anything that somebody can come up with, clever enough to try to, you know, help people, at least during their lifetime, or as long as they're in the house. I am primarily concerned with the negative impact of encouraging building of large homes that have a lot of impact on nature and, and character of the town, and things like that. So these all kind of interact. So, you know, just to be very straightforward, I'm kind of coming from that point of view, but I'm a great supporter of affordable housing. I think that, you know, if a, if a given-sized dwelling supports two families, that's, that's better. And I think that in some cases, instead of having, as I kind of mentioned in the, in the note, a bunch of freestanding, single-family homes with two-car garages, et cetera, et cetera, and all the driveways and everything, if you have, if you have common parking, parking, and, and you had a ten-unit apartment building that was really nicely made, and more efficient, that would be a better community than trying to shoehorn a lot of things into, you know, small space. Thank you.
I'll be very quick. Steve Carter, Mercerfield Road, just a couple of quick points. I was on the CPA for a year, so I think I remember the total amount of budget given out by the CPA is a thousand and three these, this year. Ten percent, or going from ten percent to twenty percent, is gonna be a relatively small number. So I think there are other ways, you're busy people, I think there are other ways, I think, to focus on this. I think, I would say you've made considerable progress. It's easy for us on this side, there's come up with all sorts of suggestions. You actually have to make some decisions. I would say that the, the number of five hundred thousand dollars is probably disappointing to some of us, and probably low in the context of what I need there. I mean, you saw the four to five million dollar figure, that's a far cry from five hundred thousand. And I would suggest, if possible, you think about either increasing that to a million, or go to a five hundred thousand dollar line item and five hundred thousand dollar from a free cash flow. Even that's, you know, just sort of a start. The hope is, that in a couple of years, a couple of these other alternatives, you know, get passed, and we can go back and eliminate, or whatever it is these. But for the first couple of years, I think I'd like, it might be appropriate if you would think about coming up with a little larger amount than what you would hope you would have, we all would hope you'd have to do it on a, on a long-term basis. And finally, I'll make the point that I made one other time. I know you're busy, I know there are a lot of important things, but, but a lot of us hope that this will be on the town meeting, and it's, at the town meeting. It sounds like you're working hard towards that, and I thank you for that.
A minimum of five hundred thousand on the policy of free cash? I mean, just, considering that, you understand the front-looking concerns to jumpstart a fund that will allow us to take some actions, some things will take much longer to do that.
Very quickly, Todd.
I can be very quick. Todd Benjamin, Affordable Housing Funding Committee, so thanks for your time in looking at this and your deliberation. One thing that, that I would mention is the pilot option. That was something that we struggled with as well. We understand it's a difficult option. All of these options have pros and cons, some have more cons than pros. But, but we looked at that as a source of, of being equitable in the community. We're asking taxpayers, we're asking everybody who is in the community to kind of buy into this idea, to step up and, and to make some changes. And we thought that it was difficult to not ask the six wealthiest, non, or property-exempt, tax-exempt organizations not to contribute in some way. We understand that ways in the past have not been successful, however. Hopefully, we can learn from those, from those endeavors and improve on that, and perhaps have better relationships and better discussions going forward. When we look at something like a meal tax, that's something that did come across our, our purview. But the thought of increasing the tax burden on small businesses, and not asking large entities that are property-tax exempt to contribute, did not seem equitable. So, so that's some color that we want to provide to that. I know from just a little anecdote in the investment world, we have a saying called, the pipping gopher. The past performance is no guarantee of future results. And with pilot, I think that's something that could be relevant. So just because it hasn't worked in the past doesn't mean it won't work in the future. Many communities have had success in doing that with educational institutions like Phillips Andover, like medical institutions, et cetera. So that's, just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Yes, entertain any motion?
Cool job.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome to send us more comments that we can hear.